So I will call to order the second monthly meeting of the Hendersonville City Council, Wednesday, August 28th, 2024. Council, you have the agenda before you. Is there anything you'd like to have added to or removed from the agenda? Or if not, a motion to approve?
Madam Mayor, I move that City Council approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Not those in favor of approving the agenda as presented, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it. We have our agenda for the evening. We have a couple of items on the consent agenda. Is there anything you would like to have explained in either of those two items or a motion to approve?
Madam Mayor, I move that City Council approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there any discussion? Not those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, and we got that. Okay, we have a couple proclamations. We don't usually do proclamations at this meeting, but the timing just worked out that this was this was when we would do it. So. Come around. And the first of these is for Be Smart Week. So if you want to come on up. Whoever all can have as many as you want, come on. Come in here, turn around. And why don't you introduce yourselves? So people know who you are.
I'm Bob Carlson, and one of our major causes is this Be Smart program. It's a disgrace that the number one cause of death for kids between 1 and 19 is guns. And, you know, and we're not talking about prohibiting, and we're simply talking about, you know, adults storing them responsibly.
I'm Kim Chow, and I'm one of the co-leads of our Be Smart team in Hendersonville. And I'm Ruth Lueg, and I'm the co-leads for Be Smart.
All right, well, thank you. Okay, whereas guns are the number one killer of children and teens in the United States, more than accident or disease, and whereas the city of Hendersonville is committed to creating a safe environment, contributing to the well-being of our children, and whereas almost every day a child gets his or her hands on a gun and unintentionally kills or injures himself or herself or someone else in the United States, and whereas research shows that one of the best ways to protect children and teens from accessing guns is to implement secure firearm storage practices, including making sure guns are secured with a lock or in a safe, and whereas there are steps we can all take, gun owners and non-gun owners alike, to make sure kids can't access guns and put themselves and others in danger. And whereas an estimated 54% of gun owners don't lock all of their guns securely, and an estimated 4.6 million children live in a house with at least one unlocked and loaded gun in the United States, and whereas when guns aren't properly stored, tragedy can strike, whether it's a child finding a firearm and injuring or killing himself or herself or someone else, or someone stealing it and using it to commit a crime in our communities. And whereas Be Smart Week raises awareness and promotes efforts to educate the public about secure gun storage, the city of Hendersonville commends Be Smart and all involved in their endeavor to keep communities safe. Now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Barbara Volk of the city of Hendersonville, North Carolina declares August 26th to 30th, 2024 to be Be Smart Week.
Thank you for, we appreciate the city affirming the importance of encouraging parents to secure their weapons and keep children safe among unintentional injury and.
Thank you.
I have a comment. Do you guys know that the city offers and has a gun lock safety program? We have given out hundreds of gun locks at a one-day event hosted by the police department here in the city. So I mean.
We don't know, not that one day event. We know that we have used probably your guns in the sheriff's department and the police department. They've been very, very cooperative and, you know, those guns, which we try not to say, oh, that could work as a bicycle lot. No, that could, but, you know, we say the safer ones, you know, we'd prefer, but that's better than no lock, and we do appreciate that it's.
Appreciate that you guys do that. Thank you.
We're going to keep working with you. So, you know, Bob and Cam are good friends of mine, neighbors, and I love their approach to this, and we'll keep working with you. Yeah.
Thank you. And our second proclamation is celebration and recognition of migrant workers. Who all wants to come up for this? All come up. All right. Okay, here we go. Whereas apples are one of the most important agricultural crops grown in Henderson County, with 91 active growers producing an estimated million bushels annually. 80% of this state's apple supply is from Henderson County, with an average income of $30 million. North Carolina is considered the seventh largest producer of apples in the United States. And whereas none of this economic benefit would be realized without the support of the migrant workers who come to Henderson County under the migrant worker H2A program. Each year, more than 5,000 workers come into our county to support the apple industry. Migrant workers bring invaluable skills and experience to the apple industry, contributing to the cultivation, harvesting, and packaging of our apple crops with diligence and care. These workers and their families remain a largely unseen population within our community, but the work they do is crucial to the health of our agricultural production. These workers tend the orchards and harvest the crop that delivers the revenue that is so important to the economic well-being of our community. And whereas the contributions of migrant workers not only support the apple industry, but also enrich the cultural and social fabric of our communities, fostering diversity and mutual understanding. Likewise, they also contribute to the financial success of the local retail businesses in Hendersonville and throughout Henderson County. And whereas it is appropriate for us to proclaim our heartfelt appreciation for the contributions of migrant workers to the Henderson County apple industry, we should honor the hard work, dedication, and commitment to delivering quality labor and services. While the migrant workers remain a largely invisible component of our community, we are compelled to pledge support and advocate for the fair treatment and well-being of all migrant workers in our county. Now therefore, I, Barbara Volk, Mayor of the city of Hendersonville, on behalf of the residents of Hendersonville, do hereby proclaim August 30th, 2024, as a day to recognize and celebrate the contributions of migrant workers to the apple industry. Be it further resolved that we extend our sincere appreciation to all migrant workers for their dedication, labor, and unwavering commitment to our community and our local agricultural heritage.
I'd like to get migrant workers here today, but since the Apple Festival is coming out, we really tried to find a few that could get out of the farms and come and receive this honor, but because they work so many hours, nobody, we couldn't find anyone who could come today. So it's a reflection of how hard they work, that they either are afraid to leave their job because they're going to miss hours, or they're, you know, they're working so hard. So I just want to say that. So thank you so much for this reminder. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we have a presentation called Color Us United. Kenny, is it you? Cher, are you going to introduce him? Okay. And we have half an hour for this presentation.
All right, thank you. I just want to thank you guys, Mayor Volk, for allowing him to come and speak. And Kenny Shu is the president of Color Us United and desires for us truly to have a colorblind America. And so he's going to share a different viewpoint of DEI as we know it, and that's been embraced in our country. So Kenny, I welcome you. Thank you.
It's an honor to address you guys, and thank you for carving up the space and time. I know you guys have a busy schedule to discuss issues that are important to the public. Diversity, equity, and inclusion is an issue that is important to the public, not because Americans are, most Americans are not opposed to diversity or inclusion, but because oftentimes we sometimes have disagreements about the way that we do diversity and inclusion. And I was invited, just speaking very transparently and frankly, I was invited, you know, as by community members in Hendersonville who are concerned with DEI in Hendersonville. And I have had taken the opportunity to do some research, personal research, communicating with some stakeholders, and now I have the opportunity to talk to you guys. But I will say, if you guys have questions or thoughts or comments, I would love to interact with that with you as well. So thank you for taking the time and inviting me. I wanted to give you a little bit of background about who I am and who Color Us United is. Based out of Raleigh, North Carolina, Color Us United is one of the leading national advocate nonprofits devoted to a race-blind society, where our mission is to strive for a world where all people are treated equally. That is, I think, the goal for a lot of people regardless on what side of the political aisle they are on. We want people to be treated equally. Our definitions of equality sometimes differ, but I will say that there are some things that Americans strongly support in terms of equality. Number one is that Americans don't support equality of outcome. We don't necessarily believe that everybody should be treated so that everybody is given exactly, ends up in exactly the same place in society. We believe in equality by merit. People should, who work hard, who come from any background, should be able to live out the American dream. That is something I deeply believe in. And when I took on the presidency of Color Us United, we immediately started doing campaigns to reform DEI at several institutions, such as our beloved UNC Medical School, in which they were having some DEI practices that we disagreed with, which I will share. At the Salvation Army, actually, it's a national organization, but they unfortunately were teaching their, in their implicit bias trainings, they were teaching their members, their own Salvation Army members, that you need to apologize for, and lament, and ask for forgiveness in a Christian sense, for being a racist. And while I believe that being a racist is a sin, and I'm a Christian myself, I don't believe that it applies to everyone at the stage that the Salvation Army was given, nor does Color Us United. So those are some examples of ways that DEI, in the name of diversity and inclusion, has actually negatively impacted people. Of course, at the Salvation Army, it caused a lot of concern among a lot of the officers who were wondering, well, am I a racist even though I've never done any racist things? I've devoted my entire life to helping the poor. Am I still a racist? And those concerns were alerted to us. We at Color Us United, we were actually the ones who were able to get the Salvation Army to back down from that implicit bias training. They actually ended their contract with Constant Conversations, which was the racial justice nonprofit that supported those implicit bias trainings, and they actually removed the language on their website that said they were dedicated to this sort of framework. So I want to talk about, and again, feel free to interact with me on this, but I want to talk about some of the DEI programs at Hendersonville, and I guess a little bit of the history based on the research that I've done. So according to Cher, and, you know, I'm going to be transparent, according to Cher, the city contracted with a diversity consultant called Akira Consultants. Akira Consultants is a consultancy firm based in racial justice, what they call racial justice. Now, the city hired them for over $175,000 to conduct a diversity and inclusion audit, a diversity and inclusion audit that targeted some of their hiring practices, some of their reform practices, et cetera, et cetera. From what I know, they hired this consultancy at the period of the George Floyd incident in 2020. You know, it was a major national tragedy. There is a lot of energy devoted into how do we fix this? How do we fix this racism problem, this problem of systemic racism that we have in America? And so, you know, I'm not blaming the city of Hendersonville for doing this, but many cities, many counties, they contracted with consultancies like this who promised them, who, not promised them, but they gave them reason to say, we could help with some of the inclusion problems that you have in this country. So I got a chance to review this 100-page-plus document that Akira Consultants came with the city of Hendersonville. And, you know, I will say that most of the stuff that it says on the paper, it doesn't say things that are substantially harmful, it doesn't say things that would, for example, trigger some of my code words, but it does also say nothing. It also doesn't say anything substantial either. The surveys that they conducted were anonymous. The main issues from Akira Consultants relating to the city of Hendersonville had to do with things like interpersonal communication. Some people were saying that interpersonal communication is lacking, or they felt that somebody was mistreating them. These are not systemic issues. These are issues that people deal with on a daily basis. I can't say, based on looking at the plan, based on the financial cost that taxpayers had to pay for this plan, 150 grand plus, that it was worth it. But if you go deeper into Akira Consultants, that's when you get some of the things that I think some of the residents here shared their concerns with you. Some of the, some of the things that they have said in this report or other reports in other cities, according to this one source, they recommended that the city must specifically pursue a race-based recruitment of job applicants in order to ensure a diverse candidate pool, that non-minority or Caucasian employees must accept their inherent bias towards employees of a different race or ethnicity. These are not things that I saw in this, in this consultancy, but they're things that they, that according to my sources have been recommended into others. So I would be very careful about contracting.
Just to clarify, that was not in our report, correct?
I know.
That is somebody else's report, correct?
I didn't see that in your report. No, I didn't see that. But, yeah, but this, again, this allows, this allows me to say, I would be very careful about contracting with you guys with these kinds of firms, renewing contracts with these kinds of firms. And I do believe that you guys did terminate your contract with them, you ended your contract with them. That was a good thing. It saved the taxpayers money, and it ended up not promoting some of these ideologies. Yeah, that's some evidence that Akira Consultants said that, you know, I could possibly agree with as well, although I would not say they would be saying anything substantial. Okay, so there are a couple, I know that you guys have a DEI committee. Now, now you have a DI committee, a diversity and inclusion committee. And among some of your recommendations is that you would provide things like a community fair for the underserved. I would question what the term underserved means in this. What do you mean by underserved? Unfortunately, when people talk about the underserved populations, they're mostly referring to black or Latino minority populations, sometimes LGBT populations. And I would ask you to clarify what you mean by underserved. If you want to say black and Latino populations, say black and Latino populations. But the word underserved gives a strong connotation that, well, these communities have just been left out. And if, to make an assertion like that, you have to have evidence. That's where the research that my firm does at Color Us United comes in. We actually look into our black students being underserved in our, in our colleges, in our, in our public schools. And the truth of the matter is, in most cities, and I haven't done one on Hendersonville yet, I have to admit, but in most cities, such as in Baltimore, in New York City, black students, Latino students, they're given equal funding in their schools, sometimes even more funding under Title I equity regulations. So it does not support the assertion that these students are underserved. So I would ask you to clarify what you mean by that. That's my recommendation there. One of the other recommendations that you gave was this idea of a street naming policy, evaluating streets. And again, I'm not a local, so I'm not going to, I'm not going to tell you what I can, what you should do. But concerns have been expressed, and there are concerns that this is really just a tepid Band-Aid. It's a tepid Band-Aid in terms of real diversity, inclusion issues that you could be addressing. Street names, street names, names of statues. These are kinds of things that more and more Americans are waking up to and are saying, these are really just Band-Aids. These are really not, are not meant to do anything except make your city seem like it's virtuous, rather than acting actually in a virtuous way. I used to live in Richmond, Virginia, where we had these monuments, these statues of Confederate statues, you know, these are not, I used to run by them. I was a kid, you know, I was, it was in the city, and, you know, these statues were taken down after 2020. Did it really do that much to help the community, or was it mainly an exercise of virtue signaling? I think it was an exercise of virtue signaling. The third thing that the city's DI committee recommended was these leadership trainings focused on emotional intelligence, quote unquote, emotional intelligence. Emotional intelligence is, is a very vague category, and I would say be careful that it doesn't fall into the kinds of implicit bias trainings that my company has had to investigate and ultimately express the voice of opposition towards. Implicit bias trainings that say things like, well, you are white, you're part of the dominant society, and therefore you must apologize for it, is unhelpful to white people, and it's also unhelpful to people. It's an inhumane way of dealing with bias problems in the workplace. It has to be a two-way street. If you're going to conduct a leadership training, you can do it without blaming certain dominant groups that fall into a purview of intersectionality, so to speak. Now, I hope that that was a little helpful in terms of the substantive critique that I have of Hendersonville's DEI programs. But ultimately, the objective that I've come here today is to really express is that DEI is not good for Hendersonville. The current, the current way that DEI has been propagated across our colleges and universities, across the public, it's not, it's growing steadily unpopular. It's becoming more popular, and it's not promoting a positive community culture. It will have, number three, a negative impact on your community and your economy. So this is a Rasmussen survey from 2024, where 72% of Republicans who were polled across the nation believe that DEI does not have a positive impact on the workplace, and 66% of independents believe DEI does not have a positive impact on the workplace. If you cater to a city and a county where there are many Republicans and many independents, you probably have to take into account these sort of numbers. I agree, and I support the fact that you took out the equity portion of your DEI committee, because equity is the admission that somebody has, that we need to fight for equality of outcome. And I think that that's something that nobody can support, at least any good-hearted American can support. But the whole idea of diversity and inclusion implies, to these Republicans and these independents, it implies one thing, and that one thing is anti-white discrimination. Because if you see, because in order to believe in DEI, you have to believe that, as it is in our county today, in our city today, that we are structurally a racist place. And if you're going to make that claim that we are a structurally racist place, then you have to supply it with evidence. You have to supply it with evidence. You have to show that certain policies are causing racist outcomes. If you don't do that, then how people are going to interpret it is, you are actively trying to change the culture to make it more towards your preferred groups. And in that way, DEI becomes the opposite of what you are trying to fight for, which is true equality. If you signal preference to your groups, you are fighting against real equality. And I know that that is a hard, I know that that is a hard thing to swallow, because, you know, we believe that we are virtuous, all of us do, but we do have to fight for true equality ideals. You know, I can, I can list statistics about that as well. I can list statistics about how white men feel forgotten by DEI. 81% of your constituents are white. But ultimately, if you continue on this path, you are going to encounter this sort of opposition, and it's not an opposition that you can easily dismiss. That's the point of these statistics. So think, and this will be the last thing of that I say, because, you know, your time is very valuable, but I'm here for questions as well. But think, do your constituents, do your policies truly promote inclusivity across not just the racial dichotomy, but across every dichotomy, age, locals? You have a community college pipeline here in Hendersonville. So why, why, if DEI asks for certain races, or asks for an ensuring of certain races to be promoted into hiring, where are you going to get those people? Ultimately, because of the population of this place, because of the population of Hendersonville, you're going to have to go outside Hendersonville. And that means that if you're going to go outside Hendersonville... And that means that if you're going to go outside Hendersonville, you're not promoting people from within your own community colleges. You're not promoting people who were born and bred here, who are local here. Those are some things that you should consider. If you're going to ask for certain racial considerations, who's left out? Do your constituents approve of this program? Do you acknowledge the growing opposition to DNI? Do you acknowledge the reasoning behind the opposition, DNI? Would your program pass a ballot initiative? If you actually gave a ballot out to constituents and asked them, would you support policies, and be very specific with your wording, would you support policies that reward these minority groups, black, Hispanic, LGBTQ, at the expense of these minority groups? Would they pass that ballot initiative? And I will tell you, in the state of California, where they tried to do something like that, the state of California, they tried to pass a ballot initiative called Proposition 16 that would do that in their colleges and universities, prefer certain applicants of certain races at the expense of other applicants of certain races. In the state of California, 58% of those people voted no. So this is not an issue that is cleanly divided in a partisan way. Finally, you should consider, is this program really the right thing that you want to do for Hendersonville? I acknowledge that in things that I've seen from you guys, that you have said things like, we need to do more to attract younger people to come to Hendersonville. And I am a young person. A lot of people coming outside of Charlotte, we love coming into the mountains, we love coming here for the education system, we love coming here for the good roads. Diversity and inclusion is very low on that list. And if it is higher, we should have the evidence for that. But in your heart, I ask that you strongly consider the principled opposition to DNI, to DNI, and take into account these considerations into your hand. Thank you.
I'm Paul Benjamin, and thank you for serving. I was a little taken back because I've been in multiple council meetings, and I know we normally start off with a pledge or a prayer, one way we started. But in dealing with DEI, if we started with our pledge, it says, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one In Hebrew, ekad, meaning one, one nation under God. So in other words, we don't have a DEI problem. We have a problem in obeying God's Word to realize that all of us are created equal. There is no race problem in America, we have a sin problem. In Acts 17:26, the Bible says, "From one blood came every ethnic, every people group." So we all one, we may have different moms and dads, but when we trace our genealogy back, as the New York Times found out many eons ago, that we all have one common thread in our DNA, which confirms the scripture that says we are one. And as Martin Luther King reminded us, that we don't judge each other by the color of our skins, but by the content of our character. Anytime we seek to divide and find platforms to create any deviation or difference between any people group or any color that we look at, it begins to divide us. And when Trayvon Martin was killed 500 yards from my front door in Orlando, I saw the media came in, and one of the top media outlets, which I will not name, came to me and said, Paul, we have changed our platform strategy because we make more money by dividing our nation. We've had an 86% bump in our viewership because of this divisive platform that this Trayvon thing has caused. And we know what happened from that event. BLM was birthed from there. And the strategy behind BLM was to amplify, it says, we now, Black Lives Matter. And if you mentioned anything that was not Black Lives Matter, if you said Blue Lives, you were called a racist. And we know we don't have a race problem because there's only one race, and that's the human race. So as we look at our strategy in any city, in any council, that we need to look at things that unite us. And I look at the bottom of our $1 bill that we all spent, it says, "In God we trust." Well, if it's in God we trust as a people, that we need to embrace His principles and realize the source of where DEI, all the Black Lives Matter and the Blue Lives Matter stem from. It is the enemy, the devil comes to steal, kill, and to destroy. So if we don't realize the strategy, anything that comes in that begins to stir and divide us, based on what our brother just said, with our different groups, it is not a good culture and a good principle to embrace as leaders. I know a lot of us might be motivated by fear because certain elements of our community begins to either retaliate on Facebook, retaliate maybe at our home, we may get doxxed. But we are facing either fear or courage. There's a time when silence is golden, there's a time when silence is yellow. And we need to stand on the courage and realize this platform of DEI and anything of that nature that divides us, it begins to become a cancer in our society. And Henderson County is a beautiful county, and as we spoke to the mayor a couple months, a month ago or so, about the different elements that are coming in to divide our families and our community. So I implore you, act on the moral courage that the foundation of our nation was birthed on, which was the star of David, which was our dual Judeo-Christian values that has launched us as a nation. The Bible says, "All the laws are fulfilled," in this one word, "to love God with all your heart, mind, and soul, and your neighbor as yourself." So if we walk in love, the Bible says, "Love fulfills all the law." We can never write enough laws to implement and bring unity in our community. But if we walk in love, we will fulfill everything, because love loves everyone. Whether you're black, white, pink, or yellow on the outside, God is not colorblind. If we made all the flowers white or all the flowers of one color, we will lack the radiance and the beauty. So He made us the way we are uniquely because the one binding tie that ties us together is love, because love does no wrong to its neighbor. So as we wrap up this session, if Henderson and every county and every person would see my banner, I will walk onto the banner of love. And that's why marriage is such a prototypical example of us as a nation. Because if we love our wives, we will now have a healthy marriage, we will now have a healthy community. So therefore, I just heard with one of the proclamations, that the guns are the number one killer. No, mental health and the ramifications of the mental health is the number one killer in the world. Because when you produce a healthy mental health in our children, because they will now be thriving in school, they will not commit suicide, they will not be influenced by the DEI, any other policy, because their mental acuity will be imbalanced, because they're being taught and modeled the image of love. So I encourage you to stand on biblical principles that our nation is founded on and not be influenced and swayed. You see, if we don't have a healthy core value, anybody can bring their value to our table. So we need to realize what kind of a diet will we embrace at our table? Are we going to be beholden to every group that comes in and says, we need to do this, we need to do that? As I deal with black pastors, you see, unforgiveness gives you the right to continue pillaging somebody else to say, well, you've done me wrong. My people group have been ostracized for years. When will we stop with the terms of reparations and all the reparations we're talking about? Every person, group has been ostracized or demeaned over our generation, our life. But when you walk in love, love stops the blood flow. Right? Because when the Trayvon Martin thing launched, the media thought that George Zimmerman was white. When they found out he was Latino, the blood stopped, and the mom was about to forgive him on national television, but her attorney stopped her because forgiveness would have stopped the pillage of the financial leverage that they would have lost. So if we walk in love, it stops the blood flow and it stops the money flow, and we know we don't want to stop the money flow. So when we trace the money, we'll know the motive. Maybe we want to have a healthy motive. Have you spent $150,000 plus to bring in a consultant that is available in God's Word for free? Are we abusing the stewardship of our money of our citizens, or are we writing our agenda on their checkbooks? So be careful, as an agenda of any city, make sure our platform and our table is based
I would just like to say diversity doesn't look like anyone. Diversity is a mix, and inclusion is making the mix work. Diversity doesn't look like anyone. Diversity is a mix, and inclusion is making the mix work.
All right. Okay, I also would like to say something.
Just with the Diversity Inclusion Committee, I would love for it to be freedom of thought and not just one thought process, and that's where it's not diverse. And so I would love to be able to come onto the board too and change the name of it, but have a community that is truly freely spoken and not with the ideology that it sits under right now.
You have attended our board members, and you've seen how diverse it is. It's not only black and white, there's, we have Jewish members, we have members from the LGBT, we have Latino, we have a handicapped person. You more than welcome to join our board. Do you live within the city limits?
I do not.
Moving to the city limits.
Okay, well, if someone else could represent it, but I do appreciate the work that you all do. Thank you.
I just want to make a couple quick points. As a council, after George Floyd was murdered, we discussed that we didn't want to have a knee-jerk reaction. And so that's why I think we took over a year to form the committee and to hire Akira consultants. And we did not want to do anything that was virtue signaling. We wanted to do things that were meaningful. And so that's why we formed the committee, so that we could give a voice to people in our community who have historically not had a voice. Also, I think calling it the Trayvon thing is a little disrespectful to his life. He was a person that was murdered.
Well, thank you very much for coming up here and presenting for us. All right. Next, our draft Parks and Green Space Plan. Oh, sorry, I didn't see you. Didn't see your hand. Go ahead. Just a second. Hmm? Hmm? Okay. All right. Take a five-minute break for those who want to leave. We'll call back to session now. Parks and green space.
On a slightly lighter note.
This is exciting.
There we go. So I'm Mark Steerwald. I'm superintendent of Buildings, Properties and Cemetery. And first of all, I want to thank you for allowing the staff to really pursue this parks and parks master plan. It's been a really, I feel like elaborate experience so far. We've really tried to integrate it with the generation X or generation H plan. And, you know, we've melded the two plans together and kind of built them around each other. But what we're really trying to do is to to set the the park system up, green space or greenway system up for the next, you know, 20, 30, 40, 50 years. One thing this this plan doesn't have a lot of our hard dates, you know, because we know that the biggest issue surrounding our park system is going to be funding and how and when we we fund different ideas. But anyway, we're very excited. We're we have the rough draft. We're very close to the finish. I believe you guys will be voting on the final plan on October 5th. So we have a month to make some tweaks. But I have Brenner Laffey here with Design Workshop. She's been the project manager so far, and you guys are familiar with her. So I'll turn it over to her.
Thank you all. It's good to be in front of you all again today. Some of this might be a little bit of a refresher for for some folks. But I'll kind of give a background on the plan, a highlight of the elements. So it kind of helps you get organized or oriented to the plan contents. A few of the highlights in terms of key findings in our evaluation of the existing park system. And then we'll we'll touch on the plan guiding principles and some implementation, which is really the kind of big vision plan. Also, just touch on the concept plans. We're also, and we're not going to go through each of those concept plans in depth. There's 12 of them. But happy to answer any questions and we'll talk about next steps and any questions that you might have. So the plan purpose, City of Hendersonville has been working, we've been working together over the past year to develop a citywide parks and green space plan that will be a blueprint for an equitable and resilient citywide parks and green space system over the next 20 years and beyond. We've been on this journey since last June where we kicked the project off. We started with a community needs and assessment. And so this included a survey, a community wide survey that lasted from September through December. We had over 800 responses to that survey. It was also at the same kind of somewhat similar timing to the Gen H plan. And there were a couple of parks questions in that survey that we also were able to incorporate into the recommendations in this plan. We had during this time, we were also gathering data. Staff was helping us to inventory everything in the park system. So you have a really good list of all the assets in your parks, from basketball courts to pool to fence. And then assess what you have. Phase two really got started in January where we were drafting plan recommendations. And we've had a couple of touch points with council during that time, as well as advisory committee for this planning process. And then really kind of over the summer, we've been drafting the plan document itself. That was released for public comment on August 8th and was was held open until the 23rd, which was just Friday. We are here today presenting and we hope that there'll be a council meeting in October to adopt the plan. Okay, so the main elements of the plan, there's an executive summary. It's a quick snapshot. If you don't want to read the whole plan, this is a great place to start. Chapter one is planning context. So this dives into that planning background, the purpose, some demographic trends that influence the plan recommendations. Chapter two is a deeper dive into the existing state of the system. I'll highlight some of those key takeaways today. And then chapter three focuses on what we heard from the community through both the survey as well as workshops. Chapters four through eight is really kind of the meat of the plan. These are organized by guiding principles. And underneath each guiding principle has a set of goals and then recommendations and action items under each of those goals. Chapter nine is a kind of tighter focus on implementation. It pulls out all of the action items that were identified as potential for year one. So what are the things that are kind of low hanging fruit that you could get started on right away that that don't require a lot of funding? Chapter, it also dives into recommendations for future operations and finance and management. So this takes a look at projecting, you know, based on population growth and pure city metrics. What is a typical kind of budget to support that kind of park system based on that population? And it also includes some recommendations on grants and other funding sources to explore. Chapter 10 details concept plans. And these are really conceptual, kind of high level recommendations for improvements to existing and new parks. Each of these will need to go through further design and refinement to implement, but captures what we heard from staff, the community, as well as identifying some potential opportunities. And then we have the the appendices that has supplementary content. Okay, a few key findings. So I think most of you all have seen this before. But one of the metrics that we take a look at is taking a look at level of service. And level of service is really a measurement that we look at from many different angles. So one of those is how many acres do you have per 1,000 residents? And it's not the end all be all, but it's one way for us to kind of take a look at where is Hendersonville sit compared to its peers? So when we take into account Hendersonville parks, and this does not include the county owned properties, so Jackson Park, it's 6.2 acres per 1,000 residents compared to 13 acres per 1,000 residents of your peer agencies. You all have about nine parks. This excludes some of those kind of smaller postage stamp parks that are most people we've found out during this process and with staff don't really identify as parks. Compared to about 12 parks with your peer agencies. And then that metric is also takes a look at residents per park. So you've got about 1,600 residents per park compared to around 1,200 residents per park. We also take a look at access. So how many residents live within a 10 minute walk to your parks? And we run an analysis that doesn't just look at bird's eye view, but also actually what what is achievable for walking? It doesn't account for specific things like are there sidewalks or crossings? But it does account for barriers, major barriers, like a highway or a stream. There is about 30% of the population of Hendersonville that live within a 10 minute walk to public parks. And then when we take away some of those that are most people don't consider as perks, it's more like 28%. This is compared to around 56% average for peers. Okay, and we also take a look at Greenville, Greenways. And so there's about three and a half miles of existing greenways within Hendersonville. There's another 1.8 that are under construction and 2.7 that are planned. There's some recommendations around potential future greenways as well. In terms of level of service, compared to other agencies your size or for a population your size, it's typical to see between four and 10 miles, which is a pretty big range. I think one thing that we learned through this process is that Hendersonville really stands out in this area in terms of potential for leadership and and really something to celebrate as a place where you excel in terms of level of service. So existing condition is another part of the evaluation. So this was conducted with staff, public work staff, who went out and geolocated all of the features and condition in each park. And then we gave an overall rating. So this doesn't necessarily mean that there might be a feature at a particular park that is at a tipping point itself, but what's the overall condition of the park? Most of the parks in Hendersonville's system are are in that kind of yellow between not not like new, but not quite at the tipping point. But there are a handful that are at a tipping point. And then there, beyond that, there are quite a few specific amenities such as Patton Park Pool that are, you know, really in need of investment in order to maintain use.
I have a question.
Yes.
How is that graded?
How is it rated? Yeah, so it's one through four. It's a pretty simple system where, and I'm not remembering the four different ratings, but it is like like new, moderate level of kind of loss of quality. And then there's tipping point. And then there is another one which we didn't rate anything in Hendersonville, which is is just unusable.
I guess I'm asking what were the metrics used to establish that rating system?
Yeah, so it's a.
Is it subjective?
It is subjective. But there are some examples. So we kind of provide a sheet. We kind of have a standard process, instructions, some examples of what's considered at each quality level for that to be developed. So what we did is take the average of of the amenities that were assessed.
And this was rated by staff?
Yeah. Okay, we also take a look at level of service of facilities. And so this this particular chart is taking a look at the recommendations. So there's a couple of different metrics that we use to take a look at how many facilities or how many residents should each facility serve, taking a look at pure cities, the size of Hendersonville, and then projecting that based on population growth. We've made some recommendations in the plan, so it's not one size fits all. Just because everybody else is doing it a certain way doesn't mean that Hendersonville necessarily should. And so you'll see on the last column, at the last two columns, we make a note about what our recommendation is relative to your current level of service. So in many cases, it's to remain the same, but you you may need additional amenities to kind of maintain your current level of service based on growth. In some cases, where you see the plus sign, we're suggesting to increase your current level of service to come more in line with your peer cities. In a couple of cases, there might very few, there is a reduction. And most of that is based on what we heard from the community. So if we're suggesting something in the opposite direction, that's that's why. Or you are already in line or above your peer city metrics. Okay, I've not included all of them in this presentation, but you'll also see some maps like this in the plan that are taking a look at each of these amenity types or facilities and where they're located and their service areas. And so these are kind of based on those metrics that we just described. How many residents do they serve? And what's the typical distance that they serve? So for outdoor swimming pool, we took a look at the 10 minute drive shed and 20 minute drive shed. For something like racket courts, we took a look at 10 minute walk shed, 20 minute walk shed, as well as including other public facilities as well here. So in blue, we've notated where there's county facilities. Did the same for picnic shelters and playgrounds and a dozen others. Okay. And then what we heard from the the survey from the public, we heard that there were kind of five most important facilities that rose to the top. Paved biking and walking trails were number one, followed by unpaved hiking and biking trails. Restrooms at parks was a requested important facility to the public. Dog park canoe and kayak was also something that was identified as important to people. We also heard that residents' most popular destinations for future greenways, really a big focus on natural and scenic views, natural water features, followed by inner city trails, city trails and downtown Main Street, as well as parks. For the next 10 years, number one was in terms of priorities that we heard from the public was to protect and preserve parks and natural land, improve existing parks and facilities, and create connections between parks, water bodies and neighborhoods. When we asked folks about what the barriers were that they were might be experiencing in terms of accessing the park system, the number one response, about 30% of folks mentioned that comfort was was a barrier for them. Lack of information, limited access, safety, and then followed by condition.
Can.
Yes.
And I think I may have just answered my own question. When it says comfort, what is, I thought comfort may be the safety, but what is comfort?
Yeah, yeah, sorry. In the survey, there were some additional context there. So comfort was referring to things like shade, places to sit. Okay. Amenities with the most unmet needs. So there's kind of a difference between what's most important to people and then what do they think has the most unmet needs? So canoe and kayak was up there again, a little bit hard to achieve in Hendersonville, but good to know what what people are interested in. Splash pad was up there, performance stage and amphitheater, yard games and unpaved hiking and biking trails.
Were those? Were those choices or were those actual, someone just said, I don't want to see this? Or were these listed as choices?
These were listed. Yeah, there were several choices. You'll see some of the comments there. Some folks, there was an open response. And so some of the, you know, things that we heard that weren't on that list were people had asked to address the needs with those with mobility issues and other ability oriented needs, need more outdoor pickleball courts. This is obviously pickleball courts are under construction, so this was before that. ADA accessible trails, soccer fields, and there was in the open response, quite a few requesting an ice rink. Terms of, we also asked people about each of the parks and asked them to rate them on a scale from kind of poor to excellent. Most of the parks, people were like, I've never heard this park. But we did hear Berkeley Mills Park, which most folks are associating with the entire parcel that includes what the the county, you know, now owns, not the portion that the city is responsible for. But should be noted that about 33% people rated that as a good or excellent park. And then Patton Park, 54% rated that as a good or excellent park. And the remaining parks had been visited visited by fewer than half of the respondents. So how often do residents use each of these different categories? So we asked people how often they're using parks, green spaces, which is really referring to just open space properties without kind of park amenities, and then greenways. And so you can see a little bit of difference here. Mainly, you kind of see that parks are a little bit more used on a weekly basis than your green spaces. And greenways are pretty close to parks in terms of usage. So there's not a lot of difference between these different categories. We also asked if if residents thought they had sufficient parkland in their neighborhood and they were given these different categories. So about 38% said no. Another 26% said yes, and another 36% yes, but. So yes, but there's limited access to getting to the park. Yes, but the parks are really too small. And yes, but the facilities are inadequate. Top park providers. So where are residents getting their park experiences, parks and recreation experiences outside of Hendersonville? So as you can see, 68% are are visiting state and national parks. 46% are using parks from Henderson County. 39% are going to neighboring cities to visit parks. Another 29% private gyms, 26 or 28% public schools and another 28% the YMCA. We also asked people kind of at a high level, how important is providing high quality parks? And 64% said very important, another 12% said somewhat important. And then you you've got 18% very unimportant and 4% somewhat unimportant. Okay. So now we're going to kind of get to the recommendations of the plan. We've had slightly different versions of this throughout the planning process as we worked with the advisory committee and the public and staff to craft this statement. So this is really a vision for the plan that Hendersonville will have a park and green space system we love with high quality neighborhood parks accessible to all, connectivity between parks, open space and where people live and work, leadership and sustainable practices and preservation of the natural environment, destination parks and placemaking that promote local character, community vibrancy, safety and sense of place. And then this vision is kind of how we then kind of feed into the guiding principles of the plan. So we have five guiding principles who are kind of the organizing factor for the plan recommendations and goals. The first one is access, which is really about making sure the parks are welcoming and barrier free, that you can get to parks. So some of those key goals under this theme or guiding principle are to launch a safe routes to parks program to improve access. And there's some reasoning behind the naming of that. It's similar to the safe routes to school program. There is funding for that. And there are some recommendations around using that terminology and program for parks to help. and program for parks to help improve access. There's more specific recommendations in the plan that kind of describe what that means. Reduce park access gaps. So this is, you know, in order to reduce gaps, that means more parkland. So there's some strategies through how to achieve that over time. Ensure parks are accessible to users of all abilities. So this takes a look at ADA, but also goes beyond that and talks about universal design principles. So those kind of principles that talk about making sure that they're usable for all abilities and goes beyond just code requirements. Creating safe park environments for year-round and improving perceptions of security. So this talks about some environmental strategies for improving safety at parks, and that includes things like improved lighting and other recommendations to improve security. Connecting people to information about their park and green space system. A lot of this is stuff that you all are already doing, but just strengthening community, communication channels, and connecting people to information about the parks that already exist. Equity is another one of the guiding principles of the plan, and this is really a commitment to justice, fairness, and the premise that everyone deserves access to a great public park. So some of the key goals underneath this category are to promote inclusion in park spaces, facilities, and events. Honor the culture, storytelling, and art, and history of traditionally marginalized communities. Require that all new park development and existing park improvement projects are driven by a robust and community-based engagement and design process. And then incorporating anti-displacement strategies as part of park design and engagement processes. And I should mention for that one, this is really talking about getting ahead of things like green gentrification. You all probably don't deal with that yet, but you have an opportunity as before you grow to consider putting some things in place to think about before you do a planning process. And some of that includes things like making sure there's a good community engagement process to, to get ahead of displacement and just consider those, those factors when you do place investment in an area. So there are some strategies in there. Nature. So this principle is really talking about protecting, preserving, and enhancing your natural features and resources. So key goals are to integrate with other citywide initiatives to promote the park system as green infrastructure. Continuing to do that is something that I think is already started in Hendersonville. Increase nature interaction opportunities. Preserve and enhance the trees, the city's tree canopy by setting a citywide goal for tree coverage within your park system. Dedicate and prioritize preservation of natural open space. And then under place, place is really talking about amplifying local character, community vibrancy, safety, and sense of place. It's kind of where all these different elements come together. This talks about activating parks. This is a strategy for helping to improve safety as well, or perception of safety, and create a sense of place and community. And then this section also talks about opportunities for partnerships to expand events that occur, that could occur in your public parks and facilities. Quality, maybe the, maybe one of the most important, especially in terms of the short term, but this is really about setting citywide standards for design, construction, and maintenance of a high-quality park and greenway system. So there are some goals around, you know, kind of rethinking the way that parks and green space delivery are conducted in Hendersonville. A goal around investing in high-quality neighborhood parks, and then increasing and diversifying park system funding in line with industry standards. And each of these have specific action items associated with them. So I won't read through all of the action items in the plan, but just wanted to give you kind of a snapshot. So there's, each of these guiding principles have an action items matrix or chart that includes action items organized by each of these goals. And then it does take a pass at identifying that we worked with staff on who might be the lead for that, carrying out that action, and what partners might be able to help support that action item, and then a timeframe. So is that something that's going to be in the short term, the midterm, the long term, or ongoing? Okay. Implementation. So those, those action items capture a lot of the implementation of the plan, but there's also the physical projects, and how do you take the recommendations of the plan and help that to make some decisions about where you're going to go next? And so we didn't want to lose sight of the kind of the bigger, the big vision of the plan, knowing that it might take some time to get there. But this plan outlines a number of existing park improvement projects. There are 12 that are kind of identified as being more significant. New park projects in areas to improve access throughout the city. So those are those areas where you see that kind of dashed circle. And those have been run through a priority matrix that I'll walk through the criteria to kind of bucket them into some phases. So if you were to start building new parks, where would you start first? Where would you go next in long term? And then the plan also outlines new greenway projects and capturing kind of all the different plans that are happening already. I just wanted to highlight that phase one, which again, as Mark mentioned, we haven't put a timeline on it, but these are kind of all the projects that have the highest score through all the different criteria, and, and broken out into these three categories. So phase one really includes improving, starting with what you have, and investing and making improvements to the park system that you already have. And then there are four new park projects. Some of those are ones that you actually are already working on. So they're not necessarily parks that you're acquiring, but property and, and projects that are already happening. Okay, so how did we come up with this phasing? And what's the kind of criteria that was used? And I did want to mention that, so each project was given a score based on this set of criteria to organize it by phase. But this model should really be seen as a living framework. Things are going to change over time as, as community needs change and opportunities might present themselves that we could not predict as a part of this planning process. So this is intended to be a tool that can be used to help make decisions and evaluate opportunities that, that arise. So there's a number of criteria here. This includes a lot of the things that we've established. So for existing parks, you're going to take a look at the, the overall quality and condition. That is a good way to organize yourself. What park is, is the most in need of improvements? Nature, does the project support the protection, preservation, restoration of natural features? That was one of the number one priorities from the community, so we wanted to make sure that there was a score and criteria associated with that. Greenways and connectivity. So will the project add to or complete the greenway system? Access, does the project, is it going to fill an existing gap in the, in the city's walk shed, which is defined as 10-minute walk to the parks? Equity, does the project serve areas identified in the equity investment zones, which we can talk about in more depth? That is based on the CDC's Social Vulnerability Index, which includes things like higher areas of concentrated poverty and other number of factors. There's 16 factors that go into that index. Site size, the project is large enough that it doesn't exasperate the citywide challenges of small and scattered green spaces. So putting your money more towards those parks that are going to be able to support the amenities that the community desires. Population density. So some, some weight given to areas that might serve more people. Future development, is this project going to help fill a need where there is anticipated growth and more population in the future? Level of service, does the project accomplish a level of service goals? So for example, would building this park enable us to build one of the amenities on the list that we know is needed in the community? Feasibility, is it feasible with its current ownership and land use? Can you get this park? Support and opportunity. So does this project align with any of your other community priorities and funding sources? Okay. We, we've filtered greenway projects through this same type of criteria and, and have three phases. I will note that there are some updates that we're working on with staff to, to update this map, but just wanted to note that the, the same type of process has been done with potential greenways. Okay.
Can you go back?
Yeah. Okay. So how do we plan for a future park system? These are some numbers that are put in here to just help you all kind of put some context around the investment for, for a park system. So the first table, table 11, is taking a look at just within your city limits. So this is your population projection over the next five, 20, and 30 years. And then if you were to take the, your pure city metrics in terms of number of acres per 1,000 residents, how many acreage would you, you need to have at that time? And then how, what's the shortage? And how much would that cost to develop new parks at 500,000 per acre, which is just a ballpark figure, that we found to be pretty helpful in terms of planning? And so this takes a look at the potential cost, and I should mention that's not meant to be by each of those frames. So for example, the 34 million by 2050 is meant to be the total by 2050. And then total operating budget. So the National Recreation and Park Association is the kind of baseline for, they survey many park agencies across the country, and were able to take a look at what, what is a typical operating budget for a town or a city your size? And so taking a budget of 120 per person, that is also extrapolated there. So what would your typical annual operating budget be? And then total FTE, so this doesn't account for full-time employees that you already have, but what is typical for a park agency based on that population size? And then we did the same thing, but including the UTJ area, just so you can kind of see what that looks like as well, for reference. Okay. The, the plan document goes into more detail on this, but just wanted to note that when we talk about diversifying funding sources, taking a look at, you know, areas beyond just the general fund in order to, to fund a park system. So typically, you see more like 62% of a park agency funded by the general fund, whereas in Hendersonville, I think it's almost 100%, right? And so these are some other areas, most, this is something that agencies are working on across the state, across the country, which is looking at ways to diversify how they're funding parks. Yes?
In your visits and time spent, what parks generate revenue?
In Hendersonville?
No.
Oh, yeah.
We already know what they do.
Yeah.
But just if you're looking towards, you know, diversifying funding sources, I think
Yeah, so in terms of revenue from parks, that can come from a lot of different things. That could be things like rentals, shelter rentals, events. Some park systems do have, charge a small fee for things like that. It can also come from, if there are, some park agencies do also offer programming, and so there's earned revenue through those programs. But it can be through ticketed events. It can be through a number of other things. But yeah, that's kind of where the revenue is usually coming from. Do you have a question?
I was just going to lighten the mood a little bit and say that I heard Jeff Miller say we should raise the rates of the mini golf. That's just what I heard.
Oh, hell no, I didn't.
Nobody, what are you doing to him?
Said I was lighting in the mood. Don't get me killed. I did not say this. What is wrong with you? I'll go on record and say that Jeff did not say that.
Go ahead.
Yeah. So this chart isn't necessarily to say that this is where Hendersonville should or can be, but just to give you a frame of reference for what's average. Yeah.
But we could use them for revenue, like at a higher level.
Yeah.
How many, so the amphitheater that we've discussed at the south end of Maine, what is the capacity that has been discussed for that park?
The latest that I believe was discussed was around 4,000.
Okay.
Was that eight, eight million? Or am I, is that wrong? Is that the number for?
Well, I think it's a lot more.
I feel like it was a lot more than that, like, put a, put a two in front of it.
Just the street?
Yeah.
Now we're talking about serious money. Wow.
So, um, I saw a show in Charlotte about a month ago, and it's at a small amphitheater, the Skylar Credit Union, which seats, I think their capacity is 5,000. And it's right in the middle of the city. They have a, I don't know if they call it a curfew or whatever, but there's something by the city limits of like time. And I don't know who owns that park, or, because it's considered a park, I would assume. And then, but, I mean, they're making a lot of money on that park because they're holding Goose and other great jazz bands that just have big goose, but just like them. But so, I mean, if, if that's, I mean, that's serious revenue, right?
Yeah.
Would pay for the park.
There's a lot of variables around that, but yeah, it can, it can, yeah. Okay.
I mean, you know, when you're talking about spending money, you gotta make it to, at least to be able to buy it, makes sense?
I mean, it would be, well, it would be nice to supplement the other streams with some actual revenue that was generated.
Like an actual park fund.
Yeah.
Amphitheater.
Yeah. You can put that on the record.
So the, the next chapter in the planning document.
He's not rubbing his head yet.
We're sorry.
No, that's okay. No, it's totally fine. The next chapter focuses on concept plans, and so I just wanted to give a highlight of what that kind of contains. So on one spread, there's a highlight in terms of some of the recommendations on the, the plan itself, and then a list of recommendations in written form. And then there's some conceptual precedent imagery to kind of describe some of those recommended improvements for each of those plans. So we are at Q and A now. I do have some additional slides if we need to talk about anything else, but open it up for any questions. Yep.
Okay. In the calculation of acres per 1,000 people, are the miles of greenway systems factored into that?
No. So when we look at the metrics and comparing apples to apples across different cities, they don't count greenways as a part of that metric. So that's a separate metric.
So none of the other cities, even though they may not have any greenways, don't actually factor that into their recreation?
It is factored in in terms of miles of greenways, but not in terms of acreage of parkland.
Okay. And I know Hendersonville is rather distinct because we have a very tight square mile of space compared to our population size. And so in general, I don't necessarily support 12.5 or 12.6 acres per 1,000 people as a goal necessarily for Hendersonville, because I think we're very different. So I don't think we're comparing apples to apples. It's like, I mean, we're talking other cities that are our population, that are double, if not triple the size, like 20 square miles. And we have an expansive greenway system that a lot of other communities don't, and so, which actually allows better feeding into our other parks. And so I just was wondering how that was factored in?
Yeah, it's Yeah, it's not necessarily saying that you have to achieve that goal. It's just one lens that we look through. So you might say that you'd rather say, well, we want to continue with the same level of service at, at a minimum that we have right now and use that as your benchmark for the number of acres that you add to your system.
But that's actually in our implementation of this plan though, right? Is to actually use that as a metric or a number?
It's, we could add a column for your current level of service to that, if that would be helpful. I know we have it in, in supplementary documentation. Yeah.
With the potential, so you know, like the Hellbender Trail, right? And there's like this whole map of North Carolina and then Saluda Grade Trail. But that is, so I know Brent and I met with Tristan at one point about it coming to the community college. But is that included in our?
I was thinking.
I was trying to look at that. That's why I had you go back and I couldn't figure out, because it currently, I think, is set to end in Zirconia on that other expired line.
It is.
And, but I know that the county has interest in it coming to the community college, which is not in the city limits.
Very close.
So is that, I don't know, should that be part of?
Is it, so looking at the future greenways, does it show that extension into, because I know. So the Southern Okeechobah would get it to the community college, right?
Trail called out independently. And conserving Carolina is currently working on a feasibility study. The Southern Okeechobah could be part of that as one alternative, but there's several alternatives, you know, including rails with trails if we went beside the Watco Line. You know, if they ever did decide to sell the line, you know, it could be, you know, rail banked. But there's numerous ways to get there currently, and it's really about selecting that I want to really focus on and making it a priority.
On that trail map, it said pending, but from what I understand, South Carolina has like actually committed state funds to purchase their rail, but we have some at this point in North Carolina.
Currently, North Carolina, conserving Carolina is under contract and has one year to complete the purchase. So they're in the process of buying the line that would go from essentially Polk County down by, in between Landrum and Tryon, all the way to Zirconia. It would be somewhere around five to seven miles to get from Zirconia to downtown, depending on the route. And it could be that there's, right now with the feasibility studies, it's not saying this is the one way to get there. There's multiple routes and it would be the path of least resistance with the best, kind of most efficient plan forward. But this plan definitely has a goal of, of, you know, connecting to the Saluda Grade Trail.
Yeah, because just with a connecting greenway system, that to me, I feel like should be kind of a priority too.
Well, the Acusa Trail is a massive spoke in the hub, you know? Very close to that, you also have the Saluda Grade or potential, the railroad line that comes through also leading to the hub. You know, it's kind of like all greenways kind of point towards the, the depot, you know, naturally. So it's a matter of having a vision and commitment to make that happen.
So the reason we made the presentation tonight is it'll be on your October agenda, not next week. So maybe between now and then, we can talk about what you would like to see added, Councilmember Hensley, or of any of, if there's things you want to add or make sure that is at least addressed somewhat in the plan. That's really the purpose for the next 30 days or a little bit less. But like we did with the comp plan, sit down and, and get those questions and comments and concerns and pass it back to the consulting team and ultimately to the advisory committee.
I'm just curious, under the equity action items, what are the actions which I, you know, I applaud you for that, it's considered developing a youth advisory council to provide guidance, but under responsibility, you're limited to one year. Why couldn't it be limited to a short term?
I'm sorry, what was the limitation?
Under, it's under the equity action item. We, you know, having a, organizing a youth advisory council to help with this plan, but the act, the responsibility is limited to one year.
Did you say youth? Youth.
Youth.
Okay, sorry.
Councilman Lower.
Y-O-U-T-H. Youth.
So.
But you have it here as a responsibility is one year. Do we not move that to like a short term?
I believe the goal would, we, that would actually be pushing it back. I think the goal was to establish it the first year, but then it would be more ongoing. So.
So it would be ongoing.
Right. It would be something that we would create to help guide us moving forward.
Just needed some clarification.
No worries.
Thank you. Oh, but one more. I guess it would be the same. Coordinating with other city departments to create a working group. So that would be pushed, that's under short term. So that's thinking, looking at it from two to five years from now, implementing this plan and working together, right? Okay.
Yes. One other quick note, when it talks about some of these goals and action items, it's like, who is the lead? Right now, we have public works for the vast majority of those. In some places, it says parks slash public works. Some of these are clearly going to take dedicated time, you know, and, and someone to really focus on them, just in grants in particular. One of the recommendations I believe is having some type of grant officer for the city. But, you know, the bigger our park system gets, the more it likely it will require someone to truly focus on it. Drive it.
This is going to sound like a really stupid question. Only stupid answers, right? I am unfamiliar with the term green gentrification. And so I guess I'm a little confused because isn't the goal to interconnect some of our, like, lower income areas as well to make accessibility for schools, education, hospitals, grocery stores? And so how does that work? Because if there's a concern that by increasing these values of parks or greenways to these areas, then that is creating this, but then.
Yeah.
That's also the part of the goal, right? Is to help people move about easier and have easier access.
Yeah, that is the conundrum of, of what green gentrification is describing. So it's definitely not suggesting that you don't make those improvements to improve access, but it's recognizing the fact that sometimes when you do that, it raises property values and taxes and makes it so that some people are not able to afford to live in that community or surrounding community. And then that can have the unintended consequence of actually not serving the people that you intended to improve access for, right? So there is not a perfect solution. If we knew the exact answer to this, we would just share it with you.
You have other solutions or?
There are some strategies that cities and towns have been starting to implement and seeing, seeing some impact from. You tend to see it a little bit more in bigger cities and in some states that have a little bit more jurisdiction to be able to implement some of the strategies. But our recommendation is to at least start the conversation because you're going to be making these investments across departments to research and determine what are some of the things that you all could be doing, that you have the, you know, the bandwidth and that are feasible to help as much as possible mitigate that outcome.
So I just, for me personally, a goal to see is that there is interconnection between all the neighborhoods and that with owning vehicles and gas and everything that goes into that, you know, having accessibility to all of these neighborhoods to me is that counteracts the cost of owning vehicles in that, in that equation.
Yeah. Thank you. It was a great question.
I would like to see some of those examples of things that people are working with. I know it's all kind of new and people are still kind of trialing stuff, but it would be cool to see what they're doing. I had also not thought about the term green gentrification. So thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Have you ever?
I learned something new today.
Sorry. Have you ever worked with like a homestead act or? And I'm pulling that back from a long time ago, hearing it where it protected tax rates from increasing with the improvements that were made for people that owned the property. It was something on that line that just guaranteed that their tax rate couldn't go up some stupid amount because of improvements.
Yeah. Yeah, there, that's one of the types of strategies. There is a number of different strategies and sometimes that includes being careful about identifying where you might be acquiring something in the future so that there is not too much perspective. If you can go to the community first, then they have more time to prepare for what might be happening. That's another strategy. It's a little bit harder to define, but we can put some examples.
When it happens, it still happens.
It still happens, yeah.
So you have to have something that kind of.
Yeah. So there are some programs that some places have put in place that do, you know, provide assistance to homeowners in an area or, as you mentioned. So that, that's one of the strategies and we can put some examples in there. Yeah.
I have another question for you. The survey, I have a feeling, just my personal feeling, that a lot of the marginalized communities was not involved in this survey because they didn't, well, I can say social media, they didn't look on social media. At some point, can we address that again in some of the communities before we commit to the actual plan? Look at the percentage.
We had a robust community outreach for this and actually went into the community.
I know, but I'm looking at the percentages here.
Part of the plan is to actually develop those committees that we're talking about and to bring in community representation so before things happen in those communities, that there is buy-in from, from the neighborhood.
And we get more feedback.
And they have input before it happens.
I was just looking at those two gentlemen and they look like they, you know, this was the first they'd heard of this. That's what I asked.
Very quickly with the green gentrification, one solution that I've noticed that has worked in some western states is to combine parks, new parks with affordable housing. And what they do sometimes is not just have affordable housing, but workforce housing. And they work out an equation so that if you buy that property and you're part of the workforce and you buy it, say, at a reduced percentage of the value, you're still allowed to gain wealth. But when you sell it, you have to sell it for the same percentage off the value that you purchased it with. So you, it's kind of the best of both worlds and it does keep people from getting pushed out.
Land trust, that's where they incorporate those like crazy. And that's, that's the key right there.
We just learned all about that.
Sure did, Jeff. You missed out on that.
Yeah, you did.
He's a part timer.
Yeah, right.
All right.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Appreciate everyone that had input in that for to the final track we're beginning. All right, next, Dogwood Grant Proposal.
Thank you, vote, Members of City Council. If you will allow me, I'm going to defer this particular item until your meeting next week. We've got a closed session and we still have to get you to your photo shoot at 6:15. So, so I've got to defer. This is, there's no critical time on this. We'll defer it to, to next week, to your regular meeting and for feedback. And so if we could move on to the closed session item.
Someone like to make a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move that the city council enter closed session pursuant to North Carolina GS 143, statute 143 dash 1811, to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the council to preserve the attorney-client privilege and to consider and give instructions to our attorney concerning the handling or settlement of a claim, judicial action, mediation, arbitration, and administrative procedure.
Is there any discussion? Not those in favor of entering closed session, say aye.
Aye.
Dis opposed, say no. Eyes have it and we are going in.